I wonder how come she don't get the cheering all the time? How can you get the cheering spot here all the time?
All right, calling to order, the Parowan City Council meeting for September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is six P. M. Welcome and thank you for coming out. Really appreciate you being here. Um, we have asked Susan Davis to provide our opening ceremonies. That will be a prayer and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, as we come to the beginning of this city council meeting, we ask that Thy Spirit will be with those in attendance. Father, we're grateful for the many blessings each of us have from Thee. Father, we ask Thee to be with the city council members and our mayor. Bless them that they might be open-minded, feel of value, and radiate the love that is in this sweet city. Father, we're thankful for Parowan. We're thankful that as a community, we all enjoyed a wonderful Labor Day full of community service and outreach. We were able to show off the city and its people in its best light, and we're grateful for them. Father, be with us that we might all be open-minded, feel that we have a voice, extend our appreciation to those who lead us. This we pray for, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
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 If you'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. I appreciate that.
All right, I would now like to ask the council if they have any declaration of conflicts with or personal interest in any of the agenda items.
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
No.
Okay, and now I need to have an approval of the meeting's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, the meeting agenda as outlined.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, clarification real quick on number nine, action in action meeting for the pool contractor. Are we making a vote on that, or is that just for, uh, information?
So I had, kinda had a question on that too, because I thought that was already decided. And then I did send out that email, and I was just going to kinda talk about that again in my report at the end. But, but I guess we can leave it if you want, and then...
Well, then we don't have anything to vote on.
I mean, there is nothing...
I mean, that might be easier.
Because it's like there is nothing to really vote on.
Just move it to the work meeting.
Work meeting.
Or can we just take it off, and then I can just report on it? Or, I don't, whatever you guys wanna do.
The only, the only question we had is, when it's on inaction, that means that it requires a vote, and since this does not have an action, we either need to move it to the work meeting, or...
Take it off.
Or you can report on it in your, in your, uh...
I would, just to say, I'm just to report on it in my council member reports.
Okay, then Mayor, I would make the motion that we, uh, eliminate number nine on the action meeting.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thanks, Jim.
Um...
Now we have to approve the amended agenda.
Okay, and now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Sorry, who seconded your motion?
James.
Yeah.
I didn't think that did.
All right, and now is the time that's dedicated to you, those of you who are here. It's public comment. Each of you, um, can come up and state your name. You don't need to state your address. You can just say that you're a resident. Um, you have two minutes to comment, and it cannot be on things that are on the agenda. Um, so the time is now yours.
I don't like being up in public, and I don't think she does either. My name's Mike Strong, this is my granddaughter Sage Packwood. Uh, a number of reasons we're here. I wanted to show her about, uh, politics and meetings and how she has a venue to express her ideas or concerns. Uh, we have two items we'd like to go over. And then when I get in front of public, I'm just, my brain and mouth disconnect. We'd like to discuss the crosswalk at two hundred North Main and also the Valentine Soccer Complex, if we have time. Uh, for quite a while, we've been, I picked Sage up at that, uh, two hundred North Main. Some days, when she gets out of school, we just sit there, because there's a lot of traffic, and we watch that crosswalk. And a lot of days, there's a lot of kids that almost get hit right there. People refuse to yield to them. They drive through there fast, uh, they're on their phones, they're texting, they're in a hurry. Uh, we believe something needs to be done. We know last spring, the state put in some flashers there. The kids used them for about two or three weeks and quit, because they're not close enough to the crosswalk. By the time they go up and hit the button, people that are coming down, they see the light, they act either like it's a traffic signal that just turned from green to yellow and mashed the gas, or they drive by looking at it, wondering what is going on, or they just will not yield. What we would like to propose is that the city council look into what it will take to extend that twenty mile an hour school zone all the way to the north parking lot of the high school. Uh, at first, we thought maybe moving two signs would do it. One, it's by the mortuary that's already covered up by a tree. Move that up to the dairy freeze, and maybe move that flashing yellow light. But the more I've thought about it, I think maybe if we could get the state, and I don't know who does this. I, I put a call into UDOT today and didn't get an answer. Uh, maybe we need another flashing light at one hundred North Main on the northbound side, and also one right by the entrance into the parking lot. But whatever it is, we need to slow traffic down. We're gonna lose kids. We don't need, I mean, and that entire street there is used as a drop-off and pickup for kids, and every day, somebody almost gets hit. It's a matter of time. It's not a if, it's a numbers game. Someone is going to get hit. We can do with it, and it's not gonna cost a lot of money. The most those two signs could cost, even if you did it at government prices, would be two thousand dollars. And we have, our electricians could do it. I mean, they can run power to any place on that street. We have light poles and power poles all the way up and down that street. If our city employees could do it, Kelly and one of his men could move all those signs in one day. But I'm pretty sure we have to go through the state. I'm pretty sure the elected officials have to make the phone calls. It's an election year. Uh, Evan Vickers is running for senate again. He's a great guy. I'm sure he would be on board with this. All you guys need to do is call him. He'll show you how to make phone calls. It's cheap advertisement for him. He, it'll buy him votes, and we're all in on it. Uh, and that's mostly what the cost will be. It's the right thing to do for our youth. That's all there is to it. Also...
Real bad, because you're out of time, so...
Am I?
Sage, do you wanna talk about Valentine's Peak Sports Complex?
Well, she was gonna yield her two minutes to me.
Oh, was she? Um, council?
It's up to you guys.
I'm fine with that. Okay, so you're, that's fine.
Valentine's Peak. Uh, we're always talking about trying to get visitors to come to Parowan. We already have them here. Valentine's Peak, every year brings thousands of people. Right now, you've got fifty kids or more up there playing around. Uh, every week, we have soccer tournaments. The only thing that's keeping that from being a premium Class A field is the turf. We need to invest five hundred to a thousand dollars a year in weed and feed and allow our Parks and Recs manager or maintenance man to take care of it. It's only gonna cost maybe five or ten hours a year extra to weed and feed. Once we get rid of the clover, the crabgrass, and the dandelions, we're gonna have a premium unit up there. I mean, we will. It'll be top of the line. We already have thousands of visitors a year coming here. Let's just give them a reason to come back. Uh, is that all we had? Are we out of time yet?
We have one, a little, almost a minute.
Okay. Anyway, we do. We have tournaments all year, and we have summer games there, too. And I don't know how many people we have there, but we have to have at least two hundred and fifty or more people a week stop there from mid, probably mid-March until into November, if we have good weather. I mean, that's fifteen thousand people or more, and I think we need to deal with it. The other item with the Valentine Park is, yes, we have signs that say, "No dogs, no horses", but every single day, people put their dogs up there, and they run around, and they poop, and they pee. Some people clean up, some don't. We've got kids up there all the time. They don't need to be involved in that. I don't know what it'll take to fix that. I have no idea. I have no opinion or anything else on that. But I think that needs to be addressed also. And we're probably out of time, and we appreciate your time and patience with us, and we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Hi, um, Heather Pete, just to follow up real quick with what he was talking about with the crosswalks and stuff. Something that could, um, immediately be done, it would be minimal cost, would be PVC attached to a street sign with some orange flags. Kids then can, you know, wave the flag and cross the street, giving them more of a visual. I know up in Salt Lake, um, as they were trying to make the city more pedestrian-friendly, um, until they were putting in those flashing yellow, like, crosswalk, um, lights, they had orange flags. And so that becomes a really quick, inexpensive solution to help make the kids more visible. So I just thought I'd share.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Great idea, thank you.
So, oh, yeah. Sure. Two minutes. Please state your name.
Mike Berg. Just so you guys are aware. So, anything to do with Main Street is UDOT, is UDOT. Um, the state safety engineer has to be involved in that. There's a request made to extend the, um, school zone, actually largely. So right now, the school zone would be considered between the two lights, right? Which is just about fifty feet past the two hun, the one hundred North crosswalk. We've asked to extend that clear down to just the other side of two hundred, so past the parking lot a little ways. That's been asked twice. We've, we've submitted that. Um, thanks to, uh, the UDOT supervisor here, we were able to get signs in down here, the, the push-button signs, um, because it, it, people are moving. Twenty-five mile, even twenty-five miles an hour, even twenty miles an hour, if a kid was to walk out and they weren't paying attention, they couldn't stop. Right? It's that fast. Um, the orange flag deal, I love it. We've been trying to get them in up here in two hundred South since we did the intersection. And that's another UDOT thing, because you're attaching to their poles, you're using, utilizing their area. Even though two hundred South is ours, when it comes to all police enforcement, all accidents, all snow plowing, except for when they're coming in and out of town, right? So there's these, like, gray areas that they've had for years that doesn't allow us to get, we can't just go put it up. So the state safety engineer out of Richfield has had those requests. And then since school has started, your SRO over there at lunch and at dinner, or sorry, lunch and dinner. I haven't had dinner yet. At lunch and after school, you guys ought to be able to see him sitting down there. That's what he's looking for because of this crosswalk. And what else would help is for us to work a program with the school, like we've been talking, to do crosswalk safety, because they're not paying attention either. So it's a huge issue, and it says very, lots of people, a lot of moving parts, so.
All right, thank you.
Cindy Stanfeld, three hundred East. Um, I have two things. The bridge was talked about before our last city manager left, and we were told at that time that the funding was already there, and they just needed to make a decision where the final bridge was gonna be put. And I have not been notified. Um, I asked him to notify, having somebody notify me to let me know what was going on with that. Excuse me, have not heard anything. Second thing is, is all the signs that you guys are aware of. Um, I was told by the chief that those were all ordered, and that's been several months ago, and I haven't heard anything about that. So I'd kinda like to follow up on that part, too. Uh, with the fair, it did not slow the traffic down whatsoever, those few twenty-five mile an hour speed limit signs. But everybody was, seemed to be courteous. You know, it wasn't like they were hot-dogging, but there was a lot of traffic, and a lot of them were not going twenty-five miles an hour. So, um, maybe by next year, we can kinda look into something for that. I don't know, what, orange flags, like everybody's talking about. So if you could follow up with me or get some information, I'd really appreciate it on those two issues.
Are you talking on three hundred East? Three hundred East is where you're talking about the speed?
Oh, yeah, but that was just minor. That was fair. I knew it was gonna be like that. But the bridge and the, the new bridge and the, um...
I know, but you were talking about the speed limit on three hundred East.
Yeah, yeah, they, no, it wasn't happening.
Okay, thank you.
And I can respond just briefly. I would wanna do research, and I'd be willing to put it on a future agenda. But I did go to the UDOT State meeting and talk to UDOT State about the bridge, and the funding is still there. But before I did, like, a formal update, I would wanna, you know, get some things together to present. So I'll put that on a future agenda that the council can talk about. Thank you. All right, I think we can move on. Always look for whoever looks like they're almost gonna do it, and I don't want them to go, ah. Thank you very much for coming in. That was valuable information. Okay, moving to the next item. Um, we're moving from the, uh, into the consent meeting. These items are those that require usually no additional discussion, and are routine in nature. All the consent items are usually adopted by a single motion.
Mayor, I've got one correction if you want me to...
Okay.
On the, uh, August twenty-fifth, uh, city council meeting, um, councilman, uh, on number twelve, it was on the pool. Um, you've got down as the motion carried four to one, but councilman Toppin was not mentioned in there as an aye. You've got council Gale, council Shirtlift, council member Burton, and then council, uh, Downey on it.
Thank you. So I would just need a motion to approve the consent items with that correction to the minutes from the August twenty-fifth meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent, um, items six and seven with the correction on the August twenty-seventh, twenty-fifth meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving now into the action meeting. These items on the agenda do require a vote. Um, we'll start with number eight. This is a mayor's recommendation. Um, I am recommending to Parowan City Council to approve Weston Reese for the Planning and Zoning Committee as an alternate member. So I would just need a motion to approve that recommendation.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Weston Reese for Planning and Zoning Committee alternate mem...
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we've stricken item number nine, so we'll move to number ten, which is the Veterans Memorial, and this will be presented by council member Jim Shirtlift.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Kelly, can you... The Parowan veterans have set aside money for, uh, some upgrades to the, uh, monument. Uh, as a result of it being on city property, we need to get the council approval for, uh, our proposal. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have used black, but what it shows is the plan is to straighten out the line on the, uh, north side. Kelly, do you have that pointer?
Oh, yeah. Okay, so what our proposal is, is right along here, around, and down to the, uh, uh, Rose Garden, we've purchased some concrete edging to straighten that out. If you, if you go by it, you can see that the grass has kinda grown in, and it's, it's hard to keep clean. Uh, our proposal is to dig that out and put the, uh, twelve-inch pavers or edging around so we can make that turn. Uh, we want to come up, make a gradual turn around the monument so that the mower can get to it without getting, having to get off and, and, uh, weed eat. We're trying to eliminate as much maintenance as we can. The other part of our proposal is, uh, remove this little bit of grass. And, uh, this is an older picture. These bushes have all been taken out except for the five big ones. And then, so our proposal is to come in, take this out, take this grass out. Uh, we've contacted, uh, several rock places. And what we wanna do is, we want to come in with weed barrier across this area and then put stones down similar to what's around the church, uh, to eliminate the weeding. Kristen Robinson is giving her resignation. She's no longer going to weed the... Uh, but I think what it'll do is, I mean, this is just kind of a... It's hard to take care of it, because it's such a small piece. It doesn't, doesn't add to it. Uh, and then, as you, as you know, we've got those twelve pots for flowers that, and we would continue to do that and continue to have the planting around the monument itself. Uh, the other thing that we're considering, uh, in this area, once we get it rocked, I had the idea of, of putting a pile of, of stones, making kind of a monument in stones for, for the veterans. And then we also, if we have any money left, we might be able to get bigger pots and then have, have the flowers out in this area as well. Uh, and then get a drip system so that we can keep the, the flowers blooming as long as we can. Uh, but that's the proposal from, from the veterans. We will pay for, we've got, as I said, we have money set aside to, to do the rocks, do the, uh, we've already bought the pave, or the edgers. We've got two pallets down at the city yard just waiting to, to be used. And then, uh, get the council's permission to talk to Kelly and the, and the Public Works to have them maybe be able to get a, uh, sod cutter to cut out the grass, bring up a tractor, maybe grate it out. And then we're, our, uh, commander is talking to the rock company, and it looks pretty good that they'll be able to, uh, give us a good deal on the, on the rocks and the, uh, weed barrier. But that's the proposal that, that the veterans, uh, there would be no city funds involved. Uh, we would use the money that's, we've had set aside for years to, uh, to complete this. The thing that we would need from the city is, uh, permission to talk to the Public Works to see if we can figure out a time that they can come and help us. Uh, one other thing, uh, once again, because it's city property, we also would ask permission on the monument itself, if any of you have been there. On the west side, we have, on the boat of stone, is the Vet, World War One veterans. On the base of the monument is a plaque with the, uh, World War Two veterans. On the east side, there's a, uh, plaque, uh, commemorating Vietnam, Korea, Bosnia, Kosovo, Grenada, Panama. We also have a proposal, uh, I contacted, uh, the monument company down in Cedar. It used to be Dedamani's. I don't know who, what the name of it is now. But, uh, we would like to get four plaques, bronze plaques, uh, four inches by ten inches, mounted on the, uh, the west side of the monument with Afghanistan, Iraq, Syria, and the global war on terror to commemorate those veterans of, of those conflicts. So that's our proposal. Sorry to take so much time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to, um, approve this project as well as assignment by, um, Parowan City Public Works where needed. Um, and anything else a council person would add?
I just had a question, Jim.
Yes.
You mentioned plaques. Is the city gonna incur cost on those plaques?
No, no, uh, that, the veterans are buying the plaques, and the installation is part of the price.
Okay.
They're, they're similar to the, the, uh, ones up at the cemetery on the back of the headstones.
Oh.
It's, it's that kind of, only these are, uh, you can get them in any size, but the ones we were looking at is four inches high, ten inches wide, with the, with the, uh, names on it.
And so you've looked at as far as spacing and they fit and...
Yeah, uh-huh.
So, okay.
And then, uh, once we get approval, then, then the monument company will come out and, and look. Uh, they also said that they could come out and engrave the, the monument, but we thought that rather... but we thought that rather than engraving it, we wanted to kind of keep with the World War I, World War II, and the other one. So we thought the plaques would be better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the Veterans Memorial Project as outlined and then also to enlist the help of the Public Works Department as well.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you for that wonderful project. Okay, moving now to item number eleven, Architectural and Engineering Services with FFKR for the Old Rock Church. And this is also going to be Councilmember Jim Shirtliff.
Okay, on this one, it's very similar to what the process we've been through on the pool. In order to go after funding opportunities, grants, you have to have the plan. And it has to be engineered. And so, with the, Ken Lamberton has been able to get with this FFKR architects. The reason that we went with these people, the chief architect is, used to be with the State Historical. He was the architect for the State Historical. And he came down and, remember David, he went through and walked through the Rock Church. The other thing that this does is, and once again, it's always about money and I understand that. But the Rock Church is such a historical, so significant historically that we have to do it right. We can't just go up and pound some nails into the, into the belfry to keep it straight. It's, it's...
I think they tried that.
They tried that and it's still tipping pretty good.
Yeah.
But anyway, the Rock Church, it's not something that we can get our Public Works guys to go up there and pound in a few nails and fix it. So, Ken Lamberton and the Committee on the Old Rock Church has been working, trying to secure funding. But once again, we've got to have the specifics. And...
Councilman Shirtliff, excuse me, is there any way to get that?
Uh, I don't, I don't believe there is, Kelly.
Very well.
Can you pull that up?
Yep.
Oh, good. So you can see, in any of these historical projects, number one priority is the verification. What needs to be done, how can we do it? And as you can see, they prioritized all of the things that need to be done. Project consists of rehabilitation of the Old Rock Church in Parowan, Utah. And that's a big word, I mean, that rehabilitation encompasses a lot of stuff. And you can see here, all of the things that are in Priority One and then Priority Two and then Priority Three. And then they go through and they list their services, what they will provide. Full A and E Design Services, Architectural Design, Structural Engineering, Mechanical, Electrical, Plumbing Engineering, and Civil Engineering. And then if we go down further, they break down the schedule as to what is required for each of these items. And then, of course, conditions and exclusions. And then, it breaks down to the compensation. So what we've got is, just like we did with the pool, we have to sign off as a city that this is what we want for the Old Rock Church.
Got a question, is this bid still good since it's back in March or...
That is an excellent question and I do not have an answer. I, I don't know. I'm hoping that they'll...
At least honor it or be close to it?
Be close to it, yes.
Judy and I did touch base, we didn't ask that specific question, but I think if there'd been an issue, they may have said something at that time.
Uh-huh.
But I wouldn't answer that absolutely, but we did touch base.
The architect involved, I think he has an interest.
Very much.
I would hope that he would have some influence.
Well, in our conversations with him, when we met with him before, David, he was... You know, we sometimes drive by that place and not realize just how significant it is. And all you have to do is get up in the roof area and see exactly...
The significance.
Mm-hmm.
What it is. I mean, kind of reminds me of, or maybe this dates me, but when they redid the tabernacle back in the...
Mm-hmm.
Early...
Yep.
They, we went up there as kids and you could actually see the rawhide and the pegs that were used to hold the beans together and...
Yeah, no nails, just pegs and rawhide.
It's pretty impressive. And we've got a very significant historical site here in town. So anyway, I would recommend to the council that we accept the architectural...
Just one point of clarification, Councilman Shirtliff. I noticed in here, it mentions the, I don't know if you go back up to where... My concern is that they addressed the roof, you know how that's not attached? Because they says the seismic graph, where is that? Voluntary seismic and structural upgrade, does that include the roof, that structural upgrade, do you think?
David, you can't ask me questions, I don't know the answer.
I almost think so.
I would, I would think so, but once again, I'm not an engineer by any stretch of the imagination. I know that we talked about that, remember?
Right.
Because of the fact that...
Because that's a very significant issue.
Because that, there are, there are no, there is nothing holding that roof on except the weight of the roof.
Right.
And in order to meet...
I would think that would...
Uh, seismic qualifications.
I think that would fall.
Well, and it's that structural upgrade, so I would...
Right, so I'm thinking that they're gonna have to do something and so I would...
Although that is an architectural feat that they did, I mean, that couldn't be replicated.
No, no. I mean, the notches in both the timbers and the masonry wall and just the way they've got the trusses. I mean, it's dead on center. It's, the weight is coming straight down the wall, it's not pushing out the wall, it's not sucking the wall in. They engineered that pretty well. But anyway, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming they will uphold like the integrity of the building as far as like the roof and...
Yeah, that's, that's why it's rehabilitation.
And all of that.
And these guys are the experts in historical preservation.
And you may remember, we did get that full packet with the color photos that broke down all the recommendations and I believe in that it did address the roof.
Yeah, you're right, thank you.
It may be in this binder.
And also for clarification, also the money is budgeted for...
Oh, yeah, it has been...
It's not something that we would have to come up with, we've got it set aside for it in their budget that we did pass and stuff like that. So the hundred and twenty-five.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, we went through and it was budgeted, but we just didn't approve it or something?
Yeah, I think we were waiting for the budget to pass before we could...
I think we were just waiting for the budget to pass.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we kind of had the cart before the horse, we had this without the budget and then we had to wait for the budget and then... So this has been tabled for, as you can see, it's March.
For quite a while.
March.
So, anyway.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve funding the engineering with the budgeted money to FFKR Architects with the outlined proposal.
I'll make a motion to approve the engineering, the funding that's been approved and budgeted for FFRK for the services and the architectural engineering of the Old Rock Church.
FFKR.
Oh.
Oh, I was gonna correct you, but I was like...
FFKR.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that subject to the amount of money, right?
Um, it could, that could be added just to be safe in the motion.
Yeah, just make sure that it's subject to the money that you have right now.
Okay.
Do you want to start over?
If it's gone up, I didn't remember if I said it or not.
I said budgeted.
As budgeted.
But as budgeted, I just want to make sure.
Okay.
No, thanks for that clarification.
That works, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't, all of a sudden it was another hundred thousand and you haven't approved it.
No, I said as.
As budgeted, as outlined.
Yeah.
Unless you want to say it again.
You want me to say it again?
No, you're fine.
All right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Another really important project and grateful we're being able to move that along. Um, now moving on to item number twelve, this is approval of city manager. We had several great applicants that came through our interview process. I called all, you know, the references on this individual and I could read some of the quotes if we get to a discussion, but I kind of would like to, but I don't, you know, want to go there necessarily unless the council would like to hear some of the things that were said by the references. Otherwise, I'm pleased to say that my recommendation aligned with others. And with that being said, I would like to appoint Dan Jesson to the position of Parowan City Manager. At this time, I'm requesting the advice and consent of Parowan City Council and a motion to consent and approve Dan Jesson as Parowan City Manager.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city manager, Dan Jesson, as stated.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor?
Yes.
Before I vote, I want to say that my vote is in no way a reflection on Dan Jesson. My vote is a protest on the way Cleve Matheson was treated by this administration. My vote therefore is, I abstain.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, so just in, councilperson Downey just said to say a few words. Just in calling his references, it was that he was strongly recommended. He helped way more than anyone expected, he's so amazingly good with figures and management. He is a builder, he is fiscally conservative, he's so helpful, he listens, he goes above and beyond, ten out of ten. He is awesome, honestly, Parowan could not find a better city manager on every different level at this time. He will do great, this is something that really interests him, he is passionate about the opportunity to serve Parowan. Several other statements like that, if that's what you were asking for, so.
I just thought it'd be nice that you all heard some of the comments. We heard what he said, but you guys haven't heard anything of how he was. So I thought that would be a good idea.
Would you like to introduce your...
Can we ask him?
Come on up, Dan.
He's from New Harmony.
And he graduated from Cedar High School.
Cedar High, Redmond, New Harmony, I was born in, I wasn't born in New Harmony, I moved there when I was nine months old. But I actually live out in Iron County right now, in the Cedar Valley. But New Harmony is home, my parents still live there and have the farm. And I actually travel to work in Parowan every day as it is and I love Parowan. I'm currently employed as the Iron County Auditor and will be transitioning out of that. It's kind of a tricky transition, it's not one of these things you just turn and give your two weeks, but I will be giving a hundred percent of myself to Parowan City. And I'm excited about everything that is happening and really, Parowan is kind of on the cusp of a lot of things. It's great to look at the action agenda and see the things that are going on. You know, not all of Iron County recognizes the gem that Parowan is, especially some of the new people that move in. And I'm excited to really help Parowan shine and be what it is. I don't, I'm one of the few people that work at the courthouse currently that don't have any relatives at the courthouse. I don't know how, I have relatives and cousins all over the place, but I don't really have any in Parowan. So I think that actually helps me because I can be, I can be neutral, I can deal with issues. I know the city manager has to sometimes stand in the line of fire and has to help with, you know, things that sometimes are sticky issues and that gets a little bit complex if it's your family and your friends and things. And so, I promise to give my all and serve the people as though it was my own town and do it in a way that is fair and neutral and balanced. So I'm excited, I appreciated the process. It's not easy to put yourself out there like that, it's not easy to take yourself from a very safe place and jump into, take a step into the dark. I do have experience at the city level before I was at the county and I loved it. I love being on the, boots on the ground where so many things are happening on a daily basis and so. Any questions or anything else I can entertain, I'm sure everybody will get to know me, but... I've been to this podium a few times for different reasons, but I'm not sure everybody knows me, but they will.
Right.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Oh, no, Councilman Shirtliff says that we need to keep this in mind, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Sharon, want you to know ties not required in Parowan, but I always liked when the teachers wore ties, so. Moving now into the work meeting, and I think I may have seen Billy here, is Billy here?
I haven't seen him.
Okay. I might need to cover this for him and I'm willing to do that. And I know he knew, so I wonder if he got called out on something. So we have a Frisbee Golf, or Disc Golf Course that was created. Billy Calloway was one of those involved. I actually almost want to call him or put this to the next meeting, but I can still cover it, it's just a work meeting discussion. He approached me a little while ago, probably a month, two months ago, about getting some signage here that would allow people to even know this existed. It's kind of a starter course, but when you go to Disc Golf, Disc Golf dot com, you're able to also see, I'm sorry, UDisc app, you're also able to see the one that's up the mountain that the BLM put in. So it's almost like a place to start as a young family and then as you improve or get more interested, you know, go up and take advantage of that one. It's a really cool little amenity, I've noticed it, I don't know if others have noticed it, but this would be a sign that would be there, he's thinking on the side of the pavilion, you know, allowing people to see that, that that is a course. He says it's a wagon wheel design with the basket in the middle. There would be little QR codes also that would be at the different tee pads. I did call the company, you know, that was recommended to me by the BLM to make the signs, the prices were very affordable. It was like fifty-two dollars for the full color sign that was the photo and then between, depending on the size of the QR codes around, it would be, you know, nine to twenty dollars depending on that side, the size of those. So the hope of him coming presenting this evening was that we would bring it to an action item and we would vote on it and allow the signage to be added to the Disc Golf Course. Oh, he is, so I should have moved, I should have skipped it. So can we pause and then when he gets here, he could add to that, would that be okay with the council?
I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Okay, number fourteen is discussion regarding reinstating suspended commercial impact fees. And this was brought to me as an agenda item by David Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. As we've discussed, the time has come for Parowan because we've become kind of a state now that the fees, the, oh, the impact fees for commercial businesses were suspended to try and entice businesses here and so forth. But now, the climate is, it's changed and it's come to a point that the time has come to reinstate those fees. We've gone to the public, we've asked them for, you know, monies through our truth and taxation and things. And other residents are paying their impact fees... And, uh, other residents are paying their impact fees, you know, as they build and, you know, and, and, and the city is sustaining these businesses right now, I mean, it's costing the city, you know, substantial monies, granted, the reason is, is to try and have these businesses re, I guess, reimburse us through, you know, the business and through the activity and so forth. But I think as far as upfront, I think it's come to a point now where the city needs to collect these fees and be in parity with, you know, everything else. And so I would just, you know, we're just discussing this, it's just a, you know, work meeting, but I would, yeah, I would suggest that we contemplate this and really, really consider reinstating these impact fees for the commercial businesses now.
Where does that money go, like how is that money spent and used, do you know?
It goes into the, you have impact fees, parks, recreation, water, sewage. Fire. Fire.
So it could be going into support?
Goes into all the enterprise.
Goes, it goes into the city, all of the city functions.
Yeah.
Are impacted by impact fees.
Okay, so, okay.
Uh, the money that we, we, uh, get, put on the pool was park impact fees, okay? So everybody that comes into town has to pay impact. And like, as David, as councilman Burton was saying, we, we, uh, suspended the impact fees for trying to get businesses to come in. And KB, for example, took advantage of, of.
Of that.
Of that and. What is it, there's several, there's KB Foundry, the, um. Uh, and then, uh. Taylor Court. Yeah, well, and then, there was, I'm trying to think. Who else? But for a long, long time, it was only KB for.
Yeah.
But I agree with you, Councilman Burton, I think it's time that we reinstated the commercial impact fees.
Yeah.
I would suggest to the mayor that we put that on the agenda, next meeting for action.
I agree.
Thank you.
Right, any other discussion? Okay. Um, now, our next item, if it is Billy, he stepped into the hall, here he is.
Dun dun dun.
I tried to cover what you would say, I probably didn't do you justice, so you can just start over.
Okay.
(laughing).
My bad. Um, hi, I'm Billy Ray Callaway, and, uh, I work for Parowin City. Um, I don't know if, if, uh, mayor has told you a brief history on how this got started. So, when I first started, um, a couple of years back, uh, Cleve called me into his office and I worried all day long, I was on trash truck, wondering what I did wrong. And he calls me in, and he had heard that I liked disc golf, and so he bought this disc golf basket and donated it to the city. And, uh, deal was, is he would buy the basket and we had to put it in. But we did everything on our own time, it was me and, uh, Stephen Ward, Justin Dally. We, uh, went and found a, a place that was acceptable with everybody, uh, put the basket in after work. And then a couple of days later, I got looking and found this Udisc app, and we created a golf course to go all the way around the park. And you have nine different places to throw from and you throw to one centralized basket. So, um, you can see we've got the QR code there, uh, I contacted the Udisc people and they gave us the code. So if you scan the code, it pulls up the app and then you scan it again and it takes you right to the course. And I have pictures and footage and everything. And I would really like some signs. That way we can show other people, because a lot of people go and they play, but they don't know there's a course. So if we had, you know, some signage up there, that would be awesome. And I would gladly volunteer my time to go and put up the signs, whatever I gotta do. I, I think it'd be a great thing for the community, um, it's fun, I highly recommend everybody go try it. That's, that's all I got.
Right.
Good question, real quick, how, just curiosity more than anything, is how, how much, have you seen a lot of use of this basket?
I have.
Uh, other people?
I have, uh.
Good. (laughing).
Yeah. Yeah. Um, yeah, I've seen quite a few people, and, uh, it kinda makes my day when you see somebody over there playing, especially when they say, yeah, I found it on the app. There's a lot of people don't know about it, and you know, they scan the app and it shows you local courses around, um, uh, I'm, I'm kinda proud that we got Evil Water Disc Golf Course named, you know, before, uh, before somebody else got it. That's pretty cool. Um, yeah, I've seen quite a few people and hopefully we see more if we get some signs.
I've got one of my employees that does it and he loves it, and it's just, it just amazes me how it's catching on, or it's caught on, let's put it that way.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's, you know, you don't realize it, but there's a lot of peo, a lot of interest in it.
Oh, thank you, it's.
And how many baskets are there?
So, we got one basket and we got nine places to throw from, so it's like.
You've gotta go from all the way there, no wonder why it hits the rough.
Well, yeah, we'll see. See, if you look at that, you're supposed to go around the library.
Each station.
So, yeah, so you know, that's par three, so you, you technically, you know, you can't really get good.
Well, I think it's a great idea.
Maybe we need to go out and try it, I didn't even know this was here.
Seen one of the baskets, but I didn't know what they were for.
Well, and I know the one up the canyon, there is always cars parked at that one, and I think this is probably more simpler for families.
Yeah, it's.
And if you want to get good and advanced, you can go up the canyon and do that one too.
Well, exactly.
So is this something a less athletic individual can participate in?
Like you wanna participate?
Anytime you wanna go, I'll do.
Like an old fat man with a bum knee.
I'm not saying that.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's a good deal.
And there would be less rattlesnakes down here on the park.
A lot, like, plus, you know, more shade.
Sharon, maybe we need to go try it.
Restroom, I mean.
David, you just have to watch the shoulder though, the old, you know, us old people, you gotta watch the shoulder.
It's in the wrist. It's in the wrist.
Yeah.
Well, you gotta watch the wrist too, at this age, everything goes.
So, one thing I would like to do.
You'd like to remind me of that, I'm sure.
One thing I would like to do, I'd like to make some stencils and, and just spray, you know, like maybe on the sidewalk, tee pad one, and just the different locations that you throw from. That way, you, if somebody doesn't wanna download the app, they can wander around and find them.
Jim, that would be beneficial for you.
What?
And you don't have to download the app, you can just see it spray painted on the ground.
We won't even go there.
(laughing). I think this is great.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you, we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't even know that this thing existed.
I didn't either.
Didn't you?
No, like I kinda seen that basket and I thought, oh, that's weird, like, like, it was just kind of like out of place for me.
Now we know what the basket is for.
You know, but now I know what it's for and we're gonna have to go try it.
And now I feel bad about the order of the agenda because we're all smiling.
Oh.
Um, so, work meeting, item number fifteen, September is suicide awareness month, and Chief Berg asked for a minute in tonight's meeting, he actually asked for five to seven minutes, minutes in tonight's meeting.
So the first thing I wanna do is show you a picture, see, Kelly pulled it up. Good picture? I can pull it on my phone. There isn't that for that. I'm almost as bad as councilmember Sherlitz, but, uh, not quite. So that right there is Officer Hart, who just sworn in as a category one police officer at five forty-four this afternoon. He successfully completed it, he hasn't gained any weight yet and he still hasn't been punched in the nose, but working on it. He's gonna be a great athlete to us, he's a, he's full of vinegar and, and very community minded, so it's gonna be great. So that's, that's the good part of my presentation. Second part, suicide awareness, so September is National Suicide Awareness Month, right? And we're not just talking just first responders, like it is suicide awareness month. But I thought it was a good opportunity to highlight first responders, simply because in our area, in our two-hundred mile area, we've had a first responder suicide death in the last fourteen days. Just right after his shift, twenty-five years old, and it's one of the saddest things I've ever heard. And then I, I was sat on the team, the debrief team that went in and tried to do the, helped with the processing for the agency. And that was by far one of the most difficult things I've ever done, just to listen to them and the pain that's involved with that. Unfortunately, the person that goes through that doesn't get to see that part of it. So, I thought it was a good opportunity to, um, kinda highlight this month. We have, um, several community members here that's very, are very passionate about it. And so, we, we want to ask you to help us get the word out, right? So you see our badges, so this is our second year, um, so cancer awareness and suicide awareness are the two colors, so November, October, and then in May, um, for PTSD awareness. And the idea is to get a community member to ask us a question about it, about the badge, and then we can provide information, right? Whether it's a little card or just a good talk. What we need people to understand is there is resources out there regardless, right? Next, R. Just push the arrow. Um, so it's not just first responders, right, I'm gonna highlight a little bit about first responders, but this is absolutely a pandemic, or a epidemic, sorry, in our, our nation. Um, one stat that I read earlier today was more than twenty-four hundred, uh, children, well, children, so, uh, adults under the age of eighteen, or kids under, people under the age of eighteen. Twenty-three hundred last year, or just over that, committed suicide for one reason or another. And I will tell you this, once you hear something or see something, you don't unsee it. And that has an impact on people, right? I heard a counselor doing a presentation on, on, uh, a TED Talk the other day about it, and she said, if you've ever seen the color of a face, or the screams of a mom, you don't un, unsee that. And that's talking specific about responders, but could you imagine the families, right? So what can we do, how can we help? So, that top line on the, the graphic there, it's not, it's okay to not be okay, is a true statement, but it's kind of clichish. It's easy to say, but what does it mean and how do we help? First thing we have to do is let people know that there are resources available, lots of resources out there. The question is, how do we get rid of the stigma, or how do we get rid of the fear of contacting those resources? Um, so I just want you to listen to something real quick, I, I won't play the whole minute. I want you to pay special attention to the, to the emotion within the voices that you hear. Kelly, you might have to press the, yeah, okay, it's going.
Fifty-first, somebody run on fifty-first? Oh, come here, who's running? Six-three and bell, six-three and bell, give me some units, six-three and bell. Mel Black's a blue cop, sir, what's he wanted for, six-three and bell? Mel Black, blue, what you got? I got an officer down, ten-one, ten-one, six-three and bell, officer down, officer down, shots fired at the police. Stay off my air, stay off my air, everybody stay off the air, I got an officer down, six-three and bell, officer shot, officer shot, off. Waiting on black. Okay, I got him, all black. Give me two ambulances, two ambulances needed for two male, two officers dead. You're gonna need a garret soon, and you need that unconscious officer. Okay, someone in the back with her, is someone in the backseat with her? Okay, listen to me, take that damn vest off right now and start compressions, start breathing, whatever we gotta do, start it now. While you're driving, the officer in the back with her, take the vest off and start compressions now, you got the air. Seven thirty-six, uh, compressed, stuck here almost sixty minutes ago. Okay, excellent, keep it rolling, baby, keep it rolling, we gotta come and they know you're coming in. Looking at the one just told you that I had, it looks like. Six-four, boy, we got the male officer, he's here, they got him in the CPR right now, side door to the emergency room, he is open. Any other female officer, please get her in there, guys, make it quick. Be safe getting there, but make it quick. Seven thirty-six, my officer here is down, they have to give me eyebrow. Shot in the head, between the eyes. Both officers on responsive in the hospital, you'll see.
Okay, so, that's an actual call in, uh, New York City, just out in the suburbs of New York City. It was, um, about four months ago, and they made contact with somebody that shot the, the female officer. And then the male officer, who was a rookie, during his training, gave chase, he ends up getting shot. You hear the, just, so the one is the dispatcher speaking to him. And he's very forward and very calm during the whole thing, right? Given direction, they've loaded him in their cop cars, they're not waiting for ambulances and they are on the way. They've got the male officer to the hospital already when, when they, he starts giving direction about CPR, right? I mean, that is forward thinking for him to be able to do that, but more importantly, you're hearing his voice right there at the end, when he finds out that she shot in the head, right? That male officer that was injured committed suicide two months later. The dispatcher is on, um, permanent medical retirement now. It's just every day, right? So, how do we fix that? Well, we fix it with HB twenty-three. So Representative Wilcox, who is the chair of the Utah, the Legislative Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Committee, ran HB twenty-three last year. HB twenty-three provides five million dollars to every single law enforcement, first responder, fire, EMS, search and rescue agency in the state, and requires that they provide mental health, period. So he set policy, it was a big deal. Um, this is pictures of the twelve, of families, of the twelve first responders that committed suicide in twenty-twenty-one in Utah. It's real, right? It happens all the time here, we get, we get calls for welfare checks, we yell that, like, all the time. And so, we need to be more vocal about it. So I'm, I'm specifically, that's specific to EMS, or to law enforcement, first responders, but it's the big picture, right? It's everything to do with our community, it's not just that. So then there's this last one real quick, you've played that one, Kelly? You have to press it. Right, right? Yep, right there. Notice number twenty-four, right? So. So, number twenty-four of his requirement is that we provide that for families and retired. How cool is that? It's at a cost, right, it's an expense, but it is absolutely needed. So I'm gonna put somebody on, on the spot here, I'm gonna put Mary on the spot, because Mary Facebooks, by the way, and I get messages from her all the time in my messages about first responder mental health, about suicide, and how do we fix that, right? I get, I talk with, with, um, Patty all the time, about what do we do about that, how do we get it out in the community? We just gotta do it, so we can start tonight, right? So if we do buddy checks, so some of you may or may not have got an email from me last year, but I like to put out this email once a year about buddy checks. It takes no time for us to contact one person a week and just see how the heck they're doing, that's it. Maybe that one contact will be a, a difference, right? So Nicole sent me this picture today. If you can't look at the, look on the bright side, I will sit with you in the dark. She's willing to take that call, right? She's willing to do a buddy check, and she's committed to do that. So I think is, if we do anything as a city, we do that, just on your own, you just check in on somebody once in a while, right? It's not really that difficult. And, and when you do do that, you'll hear stories all the time about, holy cow, you had no idea how my day was going, right? Or they'll check in on you, and they'll know how your day was going, so it's just a good thing, right? So, I would encourage us all to do buddy checks and support that. Some of the trusted resources that are there, right, Cops Are Paranoid, so, Safe UT Frontline was developed, um, by the West Jordan Chief of Police, and it's run by the, uh, University of Utah, the Huntsman Mental Health Institute, and it's a line for any first responder to contact, it's an app. Um, you, you, you get on your app and you press the button and somebody shows up, right? Safe UT is at our high school level, something they launched in two thousand seventeen, and it's utilized greatly at the high school and elementary level, I guess. Safe U T is at our high school level, something they launched in two thousand seventeen, and it's utilized greatly at the high school and elementary level, I guess, yeah. So Safe U T is a great tool. They're, they're also obviously still running the Huntsman, but they're the ones that put together Safe U T for us. Uh, there was another video I was gonna show you of an officer that was in a shooting where, when he gets, minutes after, he gets back to his car, but he's arrived, it's over, when he realizes the weight, right? And he just breaks down. And he's all on video, right? And he, there's one particular officer that sees him break down and gets with him. That officer's a trained peer support officer, has a little bit of knowledge of what to do. But you watch six or seven other officers walk up because they think he's injured, and when they find out that he's just having an emotional, they want to get as far away from him as he can, because that's the stigma. And that's within policing, that stigma is within our community as well. People don't want you to know that they're struggling with mental health because of that, right? So that's where the buddy checks come in, because you don't have to, you don't have to say anything to them. You don't have to say, hey, are you suicidal today? And by the way, there's studies have proven that by bringing up the word suicide and asking them if they're suicidal will not cause them to commit suicide. What it does is it makes them give you an agreement or an arrangement, right? So that's something that each one of us will have to take on. But I think we can just be more vocal and more, more verbal about that, um, and just do what we can individually. Any questions?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you. Phew, okay.
That's heavy.
All right, we will move to work meeting item number sixteen, which is reports, updates, all business follow-up by elected officials and staff.
You wanna start with you?
You looking at me? Okay.
Start with you.
He's looking at you.
Um, I just want to commend the, the city, uh, employees, crew or whatever during the fair, and the police. They were involved in the, you know, in the activities, and they did a great job. And anybody that's, I guess, participated or experienced the fair in any way, I think you can commend, uh, what went on. I think the fair was a success. I think it was, you know, the, the upgrade in the venues and the, uh, you know, just everything, the activities and things in general, I think it was, it was really good. And I think everyone involved needs to be recognized and commended, and, and, uh, I think this is, this shows that this was a good move for the city to, you know, let this county, they, they stepped up, I, I think, and did a good job. And it, you know, it really, and then back to the city crews, I contacted them, because there was some mention about the signs that, you know, the heroin signs as you come into town, and the weeds and so on. So I got ahold of Kelly, and I got ahold of, uh, Justin, and both of them says, that'll be taken care of tomorrow, just like that, and it was. They did a good job, they responded, and they did it because they says, you know, it's a fair, heroin's, we can't have that, you know? They take pride, and I, I respect that and appreciate that, and their response, and so I just wanted to make mention of that. But the, uh, planning and zoning met last night, and they, they approved a conditional use permit for a specific parcel of property for an alpaca, um, to be on that property. And there wasn't a whole lot more that I can think of that need to be reported, and I don't, unless, is there anything I've missed, Jerry? Or you, you were there, the committee member? Right, it was just a, a conditional use for that piece of property, yeah.
No, there will be some, some other steps as well, but it's a process.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so anyway, that's about, that was their process last night.
Their process.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that clarification, and, uh, we didn't have any other meetings really to speak of, because they canceled the Shade Tree Committee, and so I think that's, it's all good, thank you.
My turn?
Your turn.
Fantastic. I waited all night for this, just kidding. All right, so, um, with the pool stuff, I did email you guys that I did talk to Jones and DeMille, basically Kendrick, just for clarification that going after the funding and all of that stuff, and applying for, um, the funding and the C I B is all encompassed in the contract that we've already signed, signed. So there's, won't be anything above and beyond that we will owe about the contracted amount. Do you guys have any questions on that? We're all fine. Okay. All right, on to the next thing that I'm. I don't even want to talk about this. Maybe go on to the next person, I don't know, calm my emotions.
Okay, we're all here for you, and we all appreciate you so much, you don't need to feel bad about it.
Anyway. It's just because I took this project so to heart, and I worked so hard on it, and to have it not go through, just, I'm emotional about it, and I'm sorry. Um, I missed a deadline on the wrap tax that I didn't know was there. Like, there is nothing I could have done, like, the deadline was before I even started working on the wrap tax, um, the deadline was not on the Lieutenant Governor's checklist, I just feel, I just take it on personal, because it was my project, and I wanted to see it through. However, I did tell Callie I cannot leave her office crying, even though I'm crying now. Something positive had to come out of it, so I did learn a lot of things. Um, we do have a timeline now, we do know where to look up the timeline. Apparently it was, they send a timeline of when all of these things are due on the county level, and the city level doesn't get it only on the odd years, because we don't typically have an election. Anyway, it won't be missed next year. And I'm sorry.
And I called the Attorney General and, uh, office and said, how could this not be on the checklist? This is too hard. And they said it's every other year on this calendar, and
Yeah.
The other positive is that it won't cost us any money, because it'll be on a, there, there was that upside, right?
Yeah, we will save the city nine hundred dollars, because we won't have to pay half of the cost to put it on the ballot, that is a positive. Um, there are some positives, I always have to leave on a positive note. Like, if there's something that's knocked me down and it's crappy, okay, there's gotta be a reason. And I just use that throughout my entire life. So I'm just going to chalk this up as a hard learning experience, and I did learn some things. Um, the voter information pamphlet is completed, so when we have to do that again next year, it's already done. Well, anyway, so my apologies that that got missed. I didn't know I had a ball up there that was about ready to fall on my head, but, um, we are aware of the steps now. We did talk to the Attorney General's office to see if there was something easier for newer elected officials trying to take on these responsibilities to get this going. But I just was really excited about the process and doing it, and then found out that we couldn't do it was very devastating. So. That's all I have.
Rochelle, don't feel bad.
But I do.
We're all human, and you know what? You've done a lot of work, and you have taken this to a point that it hasn't been before, and we thank you for that, and we
Oh, thanks.
And we know it'll be done.
Ah. We appreciate the work that you've done.
Yes, thank you.
Don't clap for me.
Thank you.
I'm clapping for you, because I know you worked really hard, and you were keeping a close eye on those deadlines, and they weren't easy to
Like, Callie and I did have a deadline, we, like, a calendar, we had it lined out, like, both of us did not, were not aware of that, and, but we are very aware of it now, and so it won't be missed next year. But.
Thank you.
We're moving forward with T R T, though. That is the next thing on my agenda.
And just, she, she came to my office one, when she was fairly newly elected, and said, is there anything I can do to help? And she knew that folder was sitting on my desk, because I'd mentioned it several times, and she said, would you like me to take this folder? And I mean, that just meant a lot to me, because I know we, as a city, talked about this for a while, and just the administrative side of it is, is a difficult process. So I just appreciate your willingness and all the effort you put into it, and
Oh, you got it.
I will clap for you for it, just because I know what you put into it.
Well, thanks, so. We'll get it done next year for sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, I want to take just a minute, I did, um, mention going to the transportation meeting and getting that update, and like I said, I'll do a further update as I have more information to present confidently, but that is, it was good news. Um, the other thing is, we have trees along the, between the church and the park, or you all probably remember the beautiful tree-lined road that isn't there anymore. A lot of those trees are, are dead. And our forestry person, Ryan Johnson, tapped on them, I mean, he hates to take out a tree more than anybody I'll ever know. He, he, he grieved alongside me when the trees were taken out at the high school. We, I immediately called him, he came out, we stood there together, he evaluated. Same thing over here, um, the hard part is always the cost of removing trees, and so, um, Linda Smith had tried through the church to try to figure out where the property lines were. Um, and good news is, is through several, uh, phone calls, I finally got a call back from their property, I mean, their facilities maintenance, and they are gonna, going to take out the ones that are dead, and they are, they are going to be at their cost. And then he asked me, is there anything else? And I said, actually, there is, there are the ones that are dead in front of the seminary, around the seminary building. So I felt like it was really a positive interaction. He was grateful to, um, have us ha, have the trees evaluated and have the answers for him to know how to act on those, and, um, and we won't have to pull those out of Shade Tree's budget or the city's budget, and those trees will be taken care of. And they are risky trees when they're at the point that they're dropping limbs, and we know storms come and things happen, so I felt like that was worth reporting, and So when you see trees coming down, just please don't get angry. I mean, we try really hard to hold on to our trees, but when they're to the point that they tap out hollow and dead, it's a hazard, it's a risk, and it's a, it's a problem. Um, the next thing that I just quickly wanted to update is, um, I have been talking to the county about parking, because we do have people that are employed in Brianhead that need places to park to be shuttled, and talking about and working through what those numbers look like and a solution for that. So I just wanted to kind of give a quick update. If you've seen things parked in places that you're wondering why things are parked in places, now that the fair is over, we'll be able to move forward with that. But I wanted to just give a quick update that that solution is in the works, um, and that's all I have.
Mayor, may I ask a question back to Shade Tree?
Mm-hmm.
Who put the planders on the box, on the main street in front of the high school?
I think it was the high school. I mean, they had those from graduation, they're pretty.
Yeah.
They look nice.
Well, thank you whoever did.
I haven't had any meetings, but the first phase of the library roof has been complete, I believe. So we got first phase then. Now we have to wait for the bats to leave.
What was the first phase, just?
It's just for the, any water, and I, I haven't found out what they're, what they've done with the drain, uh.
Stephen came out and
Stephen came out.
Looked at it with them, and he said that was actually something Public Works could do, because it would a French drain system, but that they could do it, you know, as employees and get that taken care of.
Save some money.
And it will save us money, and he knew exactly what to do and had, you know, gone through that.
Because the original bid was to bring, bring it down and attach it to the building, and then have the, you know, just the pipe go across the sidewalk, and we couldn't do that, because it just set up the city for a lawsuit, someone tripping over it. So if we can do it ourselves, that's gonna save some good money.
Mm-hmm. And he was
But it's for the water drainage, so it doesn't just, the flat roof just puddles in the middle. When they put the membrane on, they covered all the drains.
Okay, just curious.
I didn't go up there, so that, I, that's all I was told.
Are they gonna open all those drains now, or?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
The only thing I have is a, uh, question from the Water Board. Justin, is that water transfer complete with, uh, Painted Hills? The RV park?
No, the deed's all done. Um, Jeff said he gave that to me about a month ago, and I don't recall him giving it to me, but he brought it back down today, uh, their attorney, and I looked at it and I approved it, so they'll come in and sign it, and, uh, and I'll record it.
Okay, so, all right.
But he did say he brought it down to my office about a month ago, and I don't remember him bringing it down, but I looked at it like that.
Well, that's, that's what they told the mayor and myself, when
Yeah, he said he brought it down to me, so I'm no, I have no reason to doubt him. I, there was something going on that day that was
But it is, it's
The day he said he brought it down, there was something pretty serious going on, actually here in Harrowton City, and I guess I missed it if he did it, but I did talk to him today, and he said that he, uh, um, I went through it today and looked at it and approved it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. So. Do we have anything else?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go in closed session to discuss the character of professional incompetence, physical or mental health of an individual.
Okay. Do we have a, I will need a roll call on this?
Second.
Oh, a second, I need a second on this?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Roll, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Almost got it.
David Burton, aye.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
Matt Gail, aye.
Jim Shertliff, aye.
All right, thank you, we'll move on.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you for coming out. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, good night.